You want me to wait Sandy, or you want me?
No, we can go ahead and start it, we'll just... Joel will get it fixed.
Okay.
Okay.
Call to order and roll call.
Commissioner DeVries?
Here.
Chair Ferguson?
Here.
Commissioner Goss is not here, Commissioner Hunsicker?
Here.
Commissioner Keith?
Here.
Commissioner McCoy?
Here.
Vice Chair Shores?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be seated. Alrighty, item number one, approval of minutes, regular meaning minutes of June 12th, 2018.
Move to approve is submitted.
I'll second.
Alrighty, a motion has been made, and motion's been second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Against? Alright, item number two, consideration of public comments, those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance, action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS 38-431. Any comments from the public at this time?
Ron Bear, can you even hear me? 3444 North Apache Street, I want to address the old business on the zoning ordinance for the RVs.
For RVs? Oh, that'll come up, that'll come up.
So you want me to wait?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you already filled out a form for that, we have you.
Is it working?
Ma'am? Please.
Please.
Please step forward and state your name.
I'm Barbara McCutcheon, and I live in Kingman, I have property that is outside city limits, out about Maya Market 13 or something out there, anyway, my question for you is, I have a neighbor that pulls up my stakes, I paid $300 back in February to Mr. Homequest, I don't believe they stayed up two weeks, I don't live out there, I live down in Rancho Santa Fe, anyway, he pulled up my stakes, and I have, he's put a lot of tires on my property, anyway, I believe it's my property, but the stakes aren't there, and I got a letter from someone here in Kingman telling me that it's on his property. I believe it's on my property, because he has taken up the stakes, it's hard to tell where it actually is, so, that's...
Okay.
That's what I have to say, so I'd like to hear your answer.
So you said that this property is outside the city limits?
It is, it's in the county.
It's in the county, and, and it's, you know, a county issue, it wouldn't be a city issue.
Oh.
And if somebody's pulling up your survey stakes, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
That becomes a civil matter, you know, if you know who's doing it, you know, or you can contact the county and see if they have a survey of record.
Oh, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further? Richard reports.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I actually don't have any reports tonight on the council action, as that will be heard next week, their last council meeting was canceled, so these items will be before the council next week.
Alright, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alrighty, old business, discussion and possible initiation of a zoning ordinance text amendment regarding storage of recreational vehicles, boats, trailers, and campers, at the June 12th, 2018 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the draft ordinance and the current zoning regulation, the Commission was generally supportive of the proposed regulations restricting parking of RVs on residential streets, a member of the public suggested reducing the timeframe for storage of RVs on the street from 72 to 48 hours, and that the storage shouldn't be tied to loading and unloading, as this may be hard to enforce, there was discussions that the RV should have to be removed some, be moved some distance on the street, possibly 150 feet after 48 hours, finally, the Commission was interested in relaxing the requirement that the storage of RVs and other similar vehicles must be screened from view adjoining residential areas, instead, the storage of such vehicles would need to be in the side or rear yard behind the front faecade of the residence. Richard.
Again, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, this is a discussion on the parking and storage of RVs, boats and trailers and campers within the city of Kingman, the, at your last meeting, you did review a preliminary ordinance that the council took a look at at a work session on June 5th, this will be amendment to the Kingman Municipal Code that would address parking of RVs and similar vehicles on residential streets and properties, so it'd be a new section in the city code, that, that version of the ordinance proposed to ban parking of RVs on residential streets except when loading and unloading, would require the storage of these vehicles on developed residential properties behind a six-foot-tall site restrictive wall or fence, and would allow vehicles to be parked in front of the house, or in the street in front of the house for up to 72 consecutive hours, when being loaded and unloaded, at the June 5th meeting, the council did raise some concerns over these regulations, that could result in more vehicles being parked in residential lots, and so the council sought the Commission's opinion on the issue, and just to refresh you, the zoning ordinance already addressed is the storage of, of these vehicles, and RVs, on residential property, not specifically in the street, but on property, it does ban the storage of vehicles in front yard areas, it limits the number of vehicles to two per 20,000 square feet, up to a maximum of four on any lot, requires the storage of vehicles within the required side or rear yard behind a solid wall fence, or approved planting, so it's screened from any adjoining residential areas, in the last few years, we haven't really been actively enforcing this regulation, because the alternative is for people to park in the streets without a regulation on that, it can create a safety hazard, blocking views of driveways and street intersections. So the Commission reviewed the ordinance that you saw earlier at the June 12th meeting, and as Chairman mentioned, you did consider possibly reducing the amount of time a vehicle can be parked in the street from 72 to 48 hours, requiring the vehicle to be moved every, after 48 hours at least 150 feet was discussed, you looked at removing language tying the parking allowance to loading and unloading vehicles, as it might be hard to enforce that, and then also, vehicles required to be stored in the side and rear yard behind the front facade of the house was discussed, but not necessarily requiring the screening of the vehicles, this might be, make it easier to enforce the parking of vehicles off the streets. So, the staff had a meeting after your, your meeting in, in June, it was considered, consisted of myself, Chief DeVries, and Lee Hawking from the City Attorney's Office, and we reviewed the Commission's recommendations, Chief DeVries did feel that the 72-hour timeframe was best for enforcement purposes, he'd like to keep that as is, but all agreed that removing the language tying the parking allowance to the loading and unloading vehicles made sense, and there was also support for relaxing the requirements for screening of the vehicles on residential properties. So the Attorney's Office drafted two ordinances, one was the revision of the Kingman Municipal Code ordinance, which is what the council originally had reviewed, and that revised ordinance would now, would not allow parking of vehicles more than 72 consecutive hours in front of the primary structure, or in the roadway in front of the structure, but language concerning loading and loading, unloading has been dropped from that ordinance. Second thing that was changed was the parking of vehicles on residential zone lots would not be allowed without a residential structure, so you couldn't park it on a vacant residential lot, and third, storage of the lots, or storage of vehicles must be behind the front facade of the residential structure within the required side or rear yard, however, screening of the vehicle would not be required. And we also revised, or took a sort of stab at revising the current ordinance and the zoning ordinance for you to consider, and this change would, some changes to the title and section, as well as the language to clarify that recreational vehicles are included, language clarified that the vehicles cannot be stored in front of the dwelling, but only behind, again, the front facade of the dwelling in the side or rear yard, and that language requiring screening of the vehicles would be struck from the section, so, the language of each draft ordinance is designed to be complementary, but not necessarily dependent on one another, again, the city code is more, more about parking on the street, and this one is more about parking on residential lots. So at this point, the Commission should take one of the following actions, after you had an opportunity to review the memo, one would be make a motion for staff to prepare text amendment to Section 26.830, the zoning ordinance for a public hearing, which would take place of the next K and Z meeting, and we would then consider a possible amendment to the zoning ordinance, you could ask staff bring back additional changes for more discussion in August, or take no further action, and I have included the, sort of the draft, possible ordinance change to our zoning ordinance that you could, you could consider adopting in August, and with that, I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of Richard? Thank you, Richard.
One thing I want to point out is I did make one little minor change from your staff report, where it says non-commercial, it currently says commercial, it should have said non-commercial, so, just one little minor change, although it makes, makes a big difference.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Alright, I'm going to open this up to the public, and I have three people wanting to speak, and excuse me if I don't pronounce your name right, first one is McRae Gus?
Glass.
Glass.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, perfect timing too.
Good evening, Commissioners, I've lived in Kingman almost my entire life, and my parents moved here, like a lot of people have moved here, to get away from rules and HOAs and guidelines like this, I don't know, one privately employed businessperson who would spend that much time writing that many words describing how Scott could use his property, it's unbelievable, but anyhow, and I live in Rancho Santa Fe, so most of my neighbors have gigantic driveways, my driveway is 47 feet long, and the reason we have gigantic driveways on large lots with circular driveways is to park stuff, and the thought of the Commission, or the city, the city ordinance describing how we can use, quietly use our property is absolutely beyond my imagination, so, I would ask that you would, you know, you can consider the, I would suggest you would consider the on-street parking guidelines, it makes sense, to not have streets clogged up with stuff, the reason we have large driveways in Rancho, nobody parks in the street in my neighborhood, we don't have to, but, but reaching beyond that to stipulate how we use our own driveways is absolutely crazy, and I think that you'll get, you're going to get a lot of pushback if you pursue that further, that's it, do you have any questions for me?
Um, you know, yeah, so I, I'm Charmaine.
Hi Charmaine.
Hi, I had the same, I, I felt the same way, but I didn't know that, we're trying to lighten, and make it, or they're trying to amend it to make it so you don't have to park necessarily, correct? It already is an ordinance, it's been an ordinance, you and I didn't know that.
There's an ordinance about me parking a trailer in my front driveway?
Yes, yes, we're trying to lighten, trying to make it so you don't have to park behind the gate, but that you can park from the house back, and I kind of understand now, because, and I feel the same way you do, but, because a lot of people will, you even pour concrete so you can park along the side, but, a neighbor, I don't know why, I'm a little nervous right now, but, talking, but, so, I can see, I can kind of understand a little bit, because sometimes you could be obstructing people's view with a big RV and stuff, but right now, it, I had no idea either, that the ordinance today says you cannot park any boat, trailer, RV, anywhere on your property except behind a six-foot fence, so, this was, this is already there, and so, we're trying to make it so you don't have to, that you can go from the house, the, the house back, so if you have it, like, you know, right, so, like, the house, you have parking on the side, but not necessarily behind the fence, then you could park it, like, there.
Well, why, who, who else would stipulate what you can put behind your fence?
But it's already there.
Yep, there's a guideline limiting what you can put behind your own fence, next to your garage?
In the city, yes, it's already there, I didn't know it either.
Yeah, I've lived in my house 18 years, we've never discussed that, the developer, the developer lives across the street from me, so, we have extensive CCNRs where I live, and that's not ever been discussed.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's already there, so we're trying to make it less, we're trying to make it so you can park in front of your fence, but from the house back, so I just wanted to share that, and also, it is a city, you know, so, like, your CCNRs, or your HOA would govern that, and the city is saying, in the city sense, but like, your CCNRs in Rancho may come against that even, I believe it does, I believe you have to park behind the fence in Rancho, and that would be your CCNRs, but the city in general is trying to make it so you don't have to park behind the fence necessarily, as it sits today, you do, and the only way that you, if, if your neighbor turns you in, then the city would get involved, but people aren't turning people in right now, for the most part, so I just wanted to share, that we're not trying to make it worse, we're trying to make it easier.
Gotcha.
So...
You do have an interesting point, though, I think when we talked about the facade question of trying to be level with the house or back, the little bit of what Charmaine alluded to, it was around the not wanting to block a neighbor's side view, but that is interesting, what you brought up about the circular driveway type property, because if you center your trailer or boat, you know, whatever the case may be for yourself in there, I'm not so sure in front of a circular driveway, that really is obstructive from a neighbor's view standpoint, it was more if you had side-by-side properties butted up against, and you have a particularly tall RV for it, and you park it on that side, have seen places where that can get restricted on the view.
I can park a trailer in a long bed, one-ton pickup, crew cab, and not be out in the street.
Right.
I have a long driveway, and I have, I can park the same truck in the circular driveway, not block the garages, so the, the thought of the city saying, gee, you can use this or you can't, is absolutely blows my mind.
That's how it's been.
It may be, it may, it may be text on a piece of paper, but it's not in reality around the city, I mean, it's not, that's not how it's happening around the city.
No, it's just that your neighbors haven't turned you in, is what...
Maybe, there's probably 1,100 houses in Rancho, and a lot of them have driveways like mine as well, so they'd be turning each other in, I suppose.
Right, exactly, and that's...
But that's because nobody cares, because they all have gigantic driveways, a lot of people do.
No, I'm just saying, that's what it is, so...
And I just think we're making a reference here, not everybody has a gigantic driveway.
Right.
Not everybody has a circular driveway, we're more trying to keep the, the large vehicles from the street, because it creates a safety issue for, you know, ongoing traffic, and that's kind of what we're looking at right now.
I, I understand that too, but, you know, I, we didn't all start out with gigantic driveways and circular driveways, I started out in a small house, like most of you did, and when I lived in a small house, you know, I had a flatbed trailer parked in my sideyard, that wouldn't fit in my backyard, because we had five-foot setbacks, and no alley access, but, you know, my, I had, I had a flatbed trailer that a tongue didn't stick out past the sidewalk, and I never discussed it with anybody, including the police officers or friends of mine, it, it didn't block the, the right-of-way, so, it was no big deal. So telling people, again, how they can use their own property, with far as boat storage or flatbeds or RVs, if it doesn't block the right-of-way is, I think in my mind, very overly reaching.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comments.
Alright, thanks.
The next person to speak is Stanley Hicks.
Hi, my name is Stanley Hicks, 2446 Miami Avenue, I don't have a large circular driveway, I live in the maze, if you're all familiar with it, and, as gentlemen just said, this is such an intrusion on my private property, that I can't have my 17-foot trailer in my driveway, I bought it a year or so ago, and I had no idea that I couldn't park it in my driveway, and then reading more, I understand this was really a non-enforceable, they were giving tickets to people, and then people were just moving in their, their campers or trailers in the street, so, if we're talking about the, the Commission recommending changes to this ordinance, one of the changes should be, if you have a driveway paved or gravelled or whatever, you should be able, I as a common citizen, should be able to put my property in my driveway, now, as you mentioned, do I want a 40-foot fifth-wheel sideways in front of my 50-foot property, no, so, this is where, at the very least, the recommendation to have a public hearing, I think, I, I, I just, from driving around the city, I would dare say that we'd be stretching it to say 10% of the people are aware that they're violating the law, or the ordinance, when they park their, their trailers, or their boats, or whatever, in the, their driveways, so, if we're going to amend an existing ordinance, why not amend it to say, if you have a working licensed recreational vehicle, it can stay in your driveway so long as it's not going, extending out into the sidewalk, you know, I have a two-car garage, I'm fortunate in that, so, my trailer is on one half of the driveway, my truck is on the other half, I somewhat understand, actually, I don't understand why this is even coming about, to say you can't put your, your trailer on the street, or somebody can't have their boat on the street, if it's for aesthetics, then, that's, you can drive around the city and see a lot of other places that require, or would do well for, on that purpose, if it's for the safety, as was mentioned with the, the child in Miami, the toddler dashing out, then, as I mentioned before, online, an SUV, a big truck, all of those would shield a child, so it's not a safety issue, some streets are, you're hard-pressed to get two cars to pass at the same time, whether somebody's parked on the side or not, but there are other streets where there is plenty of room, so, I just, I just want to re, just say again, you know, this, it's my driveway, I moved here four years ago, bought the trailer a year ago, had no idea that I can't, and I can't get it into my backyard, by the way, the backyard is situated, unless I want to tear down the concrete fence and build a ramp.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions or anything?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
The next gentleman is Ron Bear.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Commission, my name is Ron Bear, I live at 3444 North Apache Street here in Kingman, this ordinance, if you were to take this to court, even a dumb lawyer could get this thrown out, because number one, we go by the letter of the law, you specify front yard, yard is defined as someplace where you grow grass, driveway is defined differently even in court, so, why are we going to change an ordinance that we're arguing here, you've just made it, that we can't park in the front yard, when we're talking about driveways, you want to argue yard, that was probably when this ordinance was directed, back when half this town didn't have driveways, didn't have garages, and then I can see it being applicable, because you'd be driving up over the curb, into your grass, or what would be grass in a normal environment, I have an RV, I've had it in storage, had my windows smashed out twice, called the cops, told me it's not worth their time to investigate, you don't have enough storage lots in this city for the amount of people, that you're now going to tell, get your RVs and boats, and get them off the street, so if you're going to enforce an ordinance, you need to first have someplace for them to put that stuff, because you can't really tell them, you need to sell your crap, because we're just not going to allow it anymore, we always have grandfather clauses, and they're there for a reason, so that we don't make laws like this, I have two neighbors who park semis on the street, semis for two, three, four days at a time while they're not driving on the road, yet, this ordinance don't cover them, how come? Certainly, that 80-foot semi is a lot longer than my 35-foot RV, or my 20-foot boat, yet, I don't see no concern here, you're arguing about a child that was hit from running between a car, from a parent who wasn't supervising it, this state has repeatedly made laws trying to prevent stupid, it fails miserably, we have a law about pickup trucks with kids in it, drive around Kingman any day of the week, they're in the back of the pickup truck, cops following them, I've yet to see a cop pull one over, yet the ordinance is there, I would think that would be far more critical than where I'm parking my camper or my boat, so, if we're going to make an ordinance, we need to make it worthwhile and enforceable, number one, and you can't make it until you have someplace for the people to put... And you can't make it until you have someplace for the people to put their stuff. So even if you make it, you're going to have to put a clause in there when we have the storage facilities available and we're going to have to make sure that the cops investigate incidences of vandalism. And I will tell you, the two that I had already smashed out, there was a camera there across the street that filmed the whole thing. Cop couldn't be bothered to go, camera. That's our city. So let's do something right for a change instead of halfway.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion from the public? Any comments? Please step up to the microphone and state your name.
I just want to say real quick that we're not making this, it's already there.
You're amending it, you're amending it.
I'm just amending it, right.
Oh, amended right, amended right.
I just want to make a comment, not, not, not everybody has a really big driveway. I happen to have one, it'll hold nine cars. It won't hold, it, it would probably hold an RV. But I have a neighbor that was sighted, he was actually given a ticket for having his boat in his yard because he did not have a driveway long enough to accommodate it. I just wanted, I just wanted to add just a little bit for this. I also live in Rancho Santa Fe and so my neighbor's right across the street and there is RV parking, there's one at S&amp;S Campground, I believe is the name of it. They have some RV storage there, whether or not they have liability to cover any damage. You know, I don't know because I don't have any of that. But I, I think that when, when you are deciding for things like this, everybody needs to be taken into consideration. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Ma'am, please step forward and state your name.
Sorry.
Take your time.
I just want to say, I wish I had known something.
Could you, could you please state your name, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry, Judith McCullough, Kingman, 2446 Miami. Okay. Anyhow, we moved here four years ago and, and we love it here. And we're retired. I have three minutes, okay. My, my thing is we love to go camping, we love to do a lot of things, but we don't have the money for that and you can't buy a used camper if you don't have the money. So we went out and got us a brand-new camper, 17 feet long, $200 a month for 12 years. I may not be alive in 12 years, but I hope I am. But anyhow, all of a sudden this hits the paper. Maybe I don't read the fine print or something, but we do have some crazy, crazy rules here. I mean, I don't say you make them, but at least you're at least trying to guide the city council, is that right? Okay. I, I am a little old, so I always check with him. Anyhow, please try to understand, there's a lot of us here. We may look like we have money, we don't have money, we don't do anything. I mean, but we had a camper and we're going to have to, have to get rid of it because rather than have them repossess it after 12 years or before, or next year or this year? There's no sense, where's our dream? Where's our, where's Kingman that I thought was Kingman? I don't see it and it's really, I thought, oh, good, we get away from all this garbage here and there and down-to-earth people and people that have a heart know what it's like. None of us were raised with the golden spoon or anything, but we, we do what we can do and just don't take our dreams away from us, please, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Please step forward and state your name, please, ma'am.
Thank you for hearing what I have to say. To sum it up quickly.
Could you state your name, please, ma'am?
I'm sorry, Carol Spore. I live at 1939 Chicago Avenue. I do have issues with planning and zoning. Hopefully it'll be resolved. If, if the next-door neighbor's property, she does what she wants. I've, I've had two real estate appraisals done and the comment was, "Good luck, Carol, if you plan on selling your house." I don't really plan on selling it, my folks left it to me and I paid the mortgage off. I've done all improvements, sidewalk, widen the driveway because it gets to be a racetrack on Chicago Avenue. So to be safe, and I used the money because I knew it was an investment. I feel my rights as a citizen of Kingman, my, my rights as a property owner with respect is being violated.
Is this in relation to the RV ordinance that we're discussing? Is this in relation to the RV ordinance we're discussing or is this just a general?
I can't.
Is this just a general comment or is this related to the RV ordinance that we're discussing, ma'am?
I can't hear with this.
Is this a general question or statement? Or is this related to RV parking that we're discussing right now?
Okay, I may be a little mixed up, but I'm pursuing this with Neighborhood Services of the property owner next door to me. On the other side, when the mine closed, houses went up real quick for sale. They didn't sell, so I have a runner with the owner from California. I've had issues and the police have responded to my request. I, I pay my bills and the person that has this house just does what she feels great. I knew the previous owner before her daughter came and took her to California. The house was perfect. It isn't anymore. I'm collecting shingles, she feeds cats, I have pigeons, I have them on my roof. And you know what pigeons do to your shingles. My house is perfect and it's depreciating. I will have issues with planning and zoning and hopefully will resolve something. I have a meeting tomorrow with Neighborhood Services.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll close that off. Any discussion amongst?
Rich, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
I'm sorry I wasn't here last month, so I have a couple of off-the-wall questions. From what I read last month and kind of currently, this was just for removal of vehicles off the streets, correct? Because it's become a hazard for emergency vehicles to get down some of these more narrow streets.
Well, I think what's, there's been discussion for some time off and on about banning or restricting parking of RVs and other large vehicles on residential streets because it does create at times traffic hazard, sight visibility hazard, that type of thing. And it's been mentioned a few times tonight, there was a child that was getting killed. And that's kind of what spurred it at the council level. So the council had asked the attorney's office to draft an ordinance dealing with parking in the streets. And then they asked the, you, the commission to look at, because there is an existing ordinance as, that's not being enforced, to consider maybe relaxing some of the requirements for parking on residential lots so there's more options for people not to have to park it on the street. And that's kind of how it evolved to this point.
Okay, has anybody requested that we find out what other cities are doing? I know the city that I came from, it was, the tongue of the trailer or the vehicle could not exceed into the, to the right-of-way, which would have been the sidewalk. You could not park on the street after nine o'clock at night because of emergency vehicles and the site restrictions. I, I guess I'm just wondering if we looked into what other city ordinances are doing for these limited parking spaces?
The attorney's office has been consulting with other cities and there's a draft of their, of their ordinance in your packet as well and that's a result of that discussion, yeah.
I think on that, Laurie, it's have to find that there's a lot of variability. Just depends on community and what, there's going to be a lot of variability on that.
And that's where I was, kind of like, this is kind of a broad, it's a very broad perspective and I can see where, you know, certain people are getting upset over how it's laid out, so it's understandable.
I'd like to say I agree with, I agree 100% with the citizens. I believe if it's, if it is not having, having to do, I mean, if your CCNRs or HOA doesn't restrict it, then it's their property. I mean, if it's on concrete, not, I mean, I have a, we have driveways that have designated parking. You do, you, you pour concrete for RV parking and sometimes it's not in the front yard, I mean, not in the back of your yard. I mean, my opinion, that's my opinion, I believe, I agree.
Any further questions or Richard?
No, I, thank you, Richard.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can we just put this up for a public hearing? Can we put it out for a public hearing?
You can initiate this for a public hearing at the next meeting, yes.
I would like to initiate it for a public hearing because I do see a lot of problems with the ordinance. You know, there is like newer communities and there's a lot of older communities that, you know, they shouldn't be restricted from putting their RV or boat on the side of their house. You know, maybe restrict it on the really narrow streets, you know, or parking on the street. But putting, you know, your RV or your boat behind a gate or something like that, I think you're going to create some hardship for, you know, the citizens. And so I would love to put it out there for a public hearing and get some more feedback.
One thing that we could do is, is offer a number of alternatives for you to consider. You know, among them could be an allowance for, as long as it's on a driveway, it's okay, you know, that type of thing. Or you could have more restrictive options as well, you know, and you could look at a variety of options.
Right.
If that's.
I think that's the next one.
That's the direction from the council. I'm, I'm sorry, from the commission.
Any further questions? Okay, Richard?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I want to make, I want to make two comments. One, I've read on social media, and I believe none of us on this commission here own RV lots, storage lots in this town. We're not doing this for any financial gain, so I want to get that clear and get that out to the public. Number two, I think, I think we all, as citizens, we move to a city, whether or not we like rules and regulations. I know for myself, I did personally look down in Havasu three, four years ago. And unfortunately, that city, you can park whatever you want in your, up to your front door, on your walkway. And I don't think we as citizens here in Kingman, we want to see that. I think we want to see, we don't want to see a city looking like an RV dump. Now granted, like you did speak, that we don't have, driving around a lot of RV storage facilities for people to park their RVs or whatever. But I think with that being said, I myself have been an RV owner for 30-something years. You know, going in, when you're buying this, buying this recreational vehicle, that if you don't have storage on your property, that you're going to be having to look for places to put this in storage. So for someone that has gone and done that, I'm, I'm sorry. I mean, that's, you know, how it is, it's just part of, you know, owning the RV life. You, we got to pay one way or the other, so that's my two comments. And it's nothing to do with what this came about. And unfortunately, we had a, had a child killed, one person killed is one too many. And after a private discussion today with, with Richard, I was under the impression that most of our streets are 50-foot wide. Well, that's 50-foot right-of-way. You really get down to it, most of our streets are only 30 feet wide. And as most of you know, you park two cars on the street, you can barely get another vehicle by. And, and that's kind of unsafe, I think, my, my personal opinion, you know, what's going on. But that's, you know, my personal thought and I just wanted to get those items stated out. So, sir?
I'll come back to the podium, we might as well discuss this point. So do you think that, McCray, glass, 4014 Gemstone? Do you think that, settle down, that, you know, these, the little kid who got run over is probably three feet tall? So I've owned lots and lots of cars and they're all, you know, taller than that. So if you had trash cans, you wouldn't see a little kid. If you had a sports car, and I've had a bunch of them, they're taller than the little kid. So vans, trucks, I mean, my trailer is 13'5", but a trash can's taller than a little kid. And every vehicle I own's taller than a little kid. So I don't know how, I understand clogging up the streets with RVs and boats that's just sitting there and move. I understand that's a concern. But do you really think that taking every RV off the street would prevent that? Even 50% chance of happening again?
If it, if it.
I know if you say if it's 1%, it's worth it. But do you think is a reasonable, is there a reasonable probability that taking every boat and RV off the street in city of Kingman, but let, let, let all the other vehicles and the trash cans sit on trash day, that would prevent that from happening by more than 50%? It's, it's a hard, it's a hard, it's a hard sell, that's all.
I, I would, I do, I actually agree with Gary on that particular. I understand your point you're making, but when you have a vehicle parked, you have windshields and windows you can see through. And my 13-year-old.
Yeah, agreed.
My 13-year-old is an avid scooter rider and I don't ever relax when he's out there because I'm panicked about the way he weaves around and some of that's the discussions we have as a parent. He's trying to do his best job he can to get those risks to him. But I think that it's a little hard for, to make an argument from a car to, and, and this extreme, right? Extreme RV, there's plenty of boats that have very low profiles that have less. And there's trailers that have almost no profile to them at all, the trailer's sitting there empty. So I think you have some very good points. I think where this originated was trying to talk about the street and lessening that safety risk or probability of a safety risk. But I, I don't think anyone could realistically, either way, whether you're in support of it or against it, could say that you have 100% answer one way or another. It's, it's geared at trying to reduce probability.
Yeah, I hear you. Like in Rancho, there aren't any cars in the street, but so.
But you're an exception.
But, yeah, but when my kids were little and they were running over to Craig Schrider's house, they never, ever looked to cross the street when they're that tall. They just took off at 100 miles an hour until they finally realized when I said, hey, the dumb ones don't survive. And they finally figured out, but they were probably like eight or nine years old. They just don't, they just don't think.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the street issue is overreach or bad one to look at. Now trying to go beyond that point and state, okay, what do you do with it? If it's not on the street? And I think maybe we should be a little more open.
Yeah, I didn't come here to oppose the street limitation, by the way. I think it's a great idea.
You're, you're.
I think you're reaching, once you go past the right-of-way into their yard, that's a, that's a, that's a tough one right there.
I think that's fair comment, I think everybody, I want to echo what Gary said and fellow commissioners said. I think everybody's input tonight has been valued. Definitely, I think some comments we had last one, Laurie didn't have an opportunity to participate, but I think we got some thoughts out there, right? And obviously some people from the public that have some interest in comments, you know, one way or another. And I think further comment for us, maybe we'll get a larger sample size from it.
Yeah, a public hearing would be great.
Might be able to help guide us a little better on what's the right thing to do here.
Right on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further? You want, do we want to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to a little bit to what Rich alluded to, to bring backs maybe a larger range of options for consideration for a public hearing. So if we, if Rich, if you can bring back some restrictive, some kind of more open and that could be, get posted on the public agenda and then we could have some additional public comment on it and hopefully with that public comment, kind of guide us in a little better direction going forward.
Yeah, I'll make a second.
All right, a motion is made, a motion has been second. Any further discussion?
I, I have.
I have a request. If you would please make a definition between a driveway and a yard and bring that along with... Please, thank you.
I'll add Scott's comments to my motion.
I'd like to throw out too about commercial vehicle parking.
That's all. There is an ordinance now that exists for that, but we'll... There's a motion. Talk about that.
So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. DeBries? I approve that we go forward and have some additional discussion on it.
Vote aye?
Aye.
Chair Ferguson?
Aye.
Aye?
Sure.
Chair Key?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sandy.
All righty, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for all your comments. All right, see, now we're on new business, item number five. Zoting Ordinance Text Amendment Case Z018-0006. In residential zoning districts, the City of Kingman zoning ordinance requires a minimum separation of six feet between buildings and structures on the same lot. This requirement has become outdated and doesn't coincide with the City of Kingman Building Code separation requirements. Richard?
Good evening. Again, this is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to consider removing the six-foot separation requirement on residentially-zoned property. It's... And that's a six-foot separation requirement that's between structures or buildings that are located on the same lot in residential zones. Currently, there's a six-foot separation requirement. The... It actually does not coincide with the City of Kingman Building Code separation requirements. At your last meeting, the commission did vote to initiate a text amendment to various sections of the zoning ordinance to remove this six-foot space requirement. And so this is the public hearing tonight. There has been an increase in billing permit plans being submitted for accessory structures, such as detached garages, pool rooms, recreation rooms, and sheds that do not meet the six-foot separation requirement. In some cases, the owners could not build the accessory structure because they could not meet the side setback in addition to the six-foot separation requirement. In other situations, some owners became creative and connected the buildings with breezeways to avoid that separation requirement. Staff consulted with the acting billing official to see if this was absolutely necessary. He did state that there is a fire separation requirement in the billing code that would need to be met. However, it's not necessarily six feet. It can vary depending on exactly the type of structures being located or being constructed and, you know, openings and other things that the billing code has to consider. So essentially, this would be deferring the separation requirement to the billing code. We kind of already do that for commercially-zoned properties. We don't have a setback requirement in most cases. We defer to the billing code, which may require setbacks from property lines unless certain things are fire sprinkled or have firewalls. So this would be a similar situation. Staff is recommending amending the section that you see there on the page to delete the six-foot separation requirement and defer to the adopted billing code. And this is what the ordinance would look like. Basically, replacing that six-foot separation with a statement of the minimum separation is based upon the fire separation requirements in the adopted billing code. And with that, I'll try and answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, or Richard?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Richard?
I'd like to make a motion.
Well, let me open this since this is for new business and open for the public. Any comments from the public on this zoning ordinance? All right, it's closed. Thank you. Right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this amendment. Second it.
All right, we have a motion has been made. A motion has been second. Any further discussion? Done. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. DeBries?
Aye.
Chair Ferguson?
Aye.
Ms. Segal?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair McCoy?
Aye.
And Mr. Shores is aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item B, Joint Commission Work Session. A joint commission work session has been scheduled for Tuesday, July 24th at 5:30 PM, which will take place of the normal Historic Preservation Commission meeting. The purpose of the meeting is to identify certain projects or programs that could benefit the downtown and the rest of the community. From what I understand, this is open just for two people from this commission. And they would like the chairman to be one person. And I'm gonna go up to anybody...
I'd love to go.
There you go.
Else. So we have two people.
It is definitely not me. That's wedding anniversary and daughter's birthday, so nah, she is.
So we have two interested people. How do we...
Oh, I can go. McCoy can go, or it doesn't matter? I concede. Don't you say it?
There's...
Oh, so you're going and then Scott would go?
Can I ask why there's only two allowed?
I thought it was three.
Is it financial... Great, yeah. All right.
I believe, from my understanding, there will be more workshops so we could rotate to get Elbready that's interested in attending these, so... Scott, you want to attend this July 24th? Okay.
Where's it at?
Here.
Here. All right, we have that. So Scott McCoy will be attending along with I in July 24th. And then item number C, 2018 APA Arizona Conference. The conference will be held in Flagstaff, Arizona, this November 7th through the 9th. Three members of the commission may attend, with the commissioners who have yet not attended having priority.
That's my anniversary, man.
Free day anniversary.
I said the one.
So there'll be two other people besides the commissioner?
That's right, right?
I'll go with you.
Three altogether, right?
Three altogether is what I said.
So Charmaine?
I believe I'm working that I can't get out of.
Okay, we have time.
If you can show me November, I'll tell you.
So we're at the right now. Looks like Charmaine, and then we'll...
Okay. Very good.
Yes. Ready?
Okay, that works.
Got that one. Thank you. Okay, six announcements by commission members. Limited to announcements availability or attendance at conferences and seminars. Request for agenda items for future meetings and request for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. Any further discussions on this? Anything come to mind, anybody? All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I will second it.
Motion has been made. A motion has been second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Adjourned.